The chair notes the time.
Sorry.
Chair notes the time is six o'clock. I called the meeting of the Amherst zoning board of appeals to order. My name is Steve Judge, ZBA chair. I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. We'll begin with a roll call of ZBA members. Steve Judge is present. Ms. Tammy Parks.
Here.
Mr. Dylan Maxfield.
Here.
Mr. Craig Meadows.
Here.
Ms. Sarah Marshall.
Here.
The quorum is present. Also attending is tonight's public hearing is Mr. Rob Wachella, the planner for the town. And we anticipate Mr. Rob Moore will also be joining us. Pursuant to chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, extended by chapter two of the Acts of 2023, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to observe the meeting may do so via Zoom or by telephone. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings in real time via technological means. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi judicial body that operates under the authority of chapter 48 of the general laws of the Commonwealth for the purpose of promoting the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Amherst. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts general laws, chapter 48, and Article 10, Special Permit Granting Authority of the Amherst zoning bylaw, this public meeting has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted in mails to parties at interest. All hearings and meetings are open to the public and are recorded by town staff, and they may be viewed via the town of Amherst YouTube channel and the ZBA webpage. The procedure is as follows. The petitioner presents the application to the board during the hearing, after which the board will ask questions for clarification or for additional information. After the board has completed its questions, the board will seek public input. The public speaks with the permission of the chair. If a member of the public wishes to speak, they should so indicate by using the raise hand function on their screen or by dialing nine on their phone. The chair with the assistance of the staff will call upon people wishing to speak. When you are recognized, provide your name and address to the board for the record. All questions and comments must be addressed by the board or to the board, excuse me. The board will normally hold public hearings where information about the project and input from the public is gathered, followed by public meetings for each. The public meeting portion is when the board deliberates and is generally not an opportunity for public comment. If the board feels it has enough information and time, it will decide upon the application tonight. Each petition heard by the board is distinct and evaluated on its own merit, and the board is not ruled by precedent. Statutorily, for a special permit, the board has 90 days from the close of the hearing to file a decision. For a variance, the board has 100 days from the date of filing to file its decision. No decision is final until a written decision is signed by the sitting board members and is filed with the town clerk's office. Once the decision is filed with the town clerk, there is a 20-day appeal period for an aggrieved party to contest the decision with the relevant judicial body in Superior Court. After the appeal period, the permit must be recorded at the registry of deeds to take effect. Tonight's agenda. Consideration of minutes and approval of minutes from the meeting of April 27th. A public hearing on ZBA FY 2023-13, BWC Eastman Brook LLC, request for a special permit under section 3.340.0 of the zoning bylaw to construct an 18.87 MWAC 75.48 megawatt battery energy storage facility with associated site improvements, including stormwater management system, access road, 16-foot-high sound wall barrier, vegetative buffer at 515 Sunderland Road, MAP 2A parcel 34, RO residential outline, RLD/FC residential low-density farmland conservation zoning districts. This is continued from April 27th, 2023. Public meeting to follow and discussion by the members of the board. General public comment period on matters not before the board tonight. Other business not anticipated within 48 hours in adjournment. The first order of business is the consideration of minutes from our last meeting. I have reviewed the minutes. I have found them to be accurate, and I wonder if anybody has any changes or modifications. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the April 27th, 2023 ZBA meeting.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? If not, vote occurs on the motion. The chair votes aye. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
The minute, the vote is unanimous, five to zero. The minutes are approved. Rob, those are really good minutes. I really appreciate that, the work it takes to do that, and it's pretty impressive work, so. And it really helps, it does help to to remember exactly what we did the last meeting and to refresh our memory of, before we take up this continued application like this. So, thank you very much.
No problem. And if they, I wanted to ask one question of the board, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
So, do the minutes seem like they're at a good, they're not like too overbearing for people to review? Because I know it's gotten to nine pages, and I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't too much for the board to look over before meeting. I can condense them for future meetings if that's preferable, or if the board's okay with the minutes as they are. I mean, the last hearing, the last meeting that this covered had a lot of information that was discussed, so I had to capture a lot of it. But, I don't know, if you guys are okay with me doing it this way, I'll keep doing it that way. But, just keep in mind, if permits moving forward aren't as detail-oriented as this one is, they might be shorter.
I think this is fine. This is fine. I mean, I found them to be very detailed. Perhaps you could do less, but I would err on the side of the detail, and then if we find that it's too much or you're too overworked, you can come back and we can revisit it.
Awesome.
Great. Very good. The first order of business in the public hearing on is on ZBA FY 2023-13, BWC Eastman Brook LLC, request for the special permit under section 3.340.0 of the zoning bylaw to construct an 18.87 MWAC 75.48 megawatt battery energy storage facility with the associated site improvements, including stormwater management system, access road, 16-foot-high sound barrier wall, and vegetative buffer at 515 Sunderland Road, MAP 2A parcel 34, RO residential outline, RLDFC residential low-density farmland conservation zoning districts. This is continued from April 27th, 2023. Are there any additional disclosures since our last meeting? If not, we did do an additional, a second site visit on May 15th, was it? May 10th? We did a second site visit. At that time, we, the purpose of that was really to, the principal purpose was to see the footprint of the building and the the sound wall laid out on the property. So, we observed that. We met with the engineer. We observed that. We walked around the site. We walked the, we walked along the limits of the boundary of the building and the sound wall, the sound barrier. The following questions were asked. Would some of the trees on the site remain? Is the grass outside of the project, will the grass outside of the project area be left undisturbed? What's the distance from the vehicle gate to the end of the access road? Will it be 150 feet? With the second gate on the southeast portion of the site only for access by foot? Why does the southern portion of the site have a zigzag shape to it? It seems to limit the amount of battery racks that could be located on the site. And lastly, would the applicant consider working with local artists to construct a art mural or some other kind of art on the sound barrier wall? I think those pretty much adequately reflect the questions we asked and what we did. If anybody want to add anything to that? All right.
Just that it was very useful. Excuse me, Mr. Chair. It was very useful, yeah. So, we appreciate the effort to stake that out again.
And it really did help to get a sense of how the project sits on that property. Ms. Parks?
I'm sorry, I wasn't sure. Did you say that we were hoping that they would save trees that were able to be saved?
I did not mention that, but we did discuss which trees would be saved, yes. We did. And we asked them, and we expressed a desire to save as many as possible. Good catch. I also want to note that Rob Moore, the building commissioner, has joined us as well. So, the next order is to review the submissions. The submissions since our last meeting are, most of which are outlined in the draft project application report, include, first of all, we'll refer to that, they're in red. So, we have new site plan or updated site plans, which are dated 5/12/2023, which includes sheet one through five, existing conditions, proposed site plan, sediment and erosion controls, site details, additional site details. This extension of sound barrier details, which was submitted on 5/17, and those are the ones listed on the project application report. In addition, we have a letter dated May 17th from Mike Zimmer of Blue Wave, responding to 16 questions and requests from the board. We have an updated emergency response plan dated May 17th. We have details of the sound barrier. We have a construction schedule. We have a rendering of a site, the structure and the sound barrier, and we have the document from the staff entitled "Research for the 5/25/2023 ZBA Meeting." I think that's everything. Is it, Rob? And did we have, I know no public comment was made on this or submitted to the, to the, to ZBA or to the council on this.
No, not for this project.
All right. So, next order of business is to hear from the applicant. So, I guess what the most valuable thing to be would be to go through those responsive questions that we left at the, from the last meeting, which we sent to you in the last meeting, and your response to those. And I guess Josh, are you going to represent the, will you identify yourself and your address for the record?
Yes, this is Josh Laracy from Blue Wave, who is addressed is on 15 Huntington Ave, Boston, Massachusetts, CR2116.
Great. So, is that, is that how you wish to proceed, Mr. Laracy, is to go through that letter of the 17th? And give us more detail, or do you wish to go somewhere, do you have other plan for your presentation?
No, Mr. Chair, that works perfectly fine. I was just planning to pull up our letter on the screen, go through each of those responsible by one, and just open up to the board for questions or clarifications on any of those responses.
That sounds great.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and Rob, thank you as well. And I suspect by Rob, the building department, Rob Blair. Thank you all for your time. So, I'll share my screen now. As Rob mentioned, we submitted a number of materials, including responses to board questions and requests from our last meeting, public hearing. So, I'll go through those by one. I also have the plan up as well, the plan that I can reference for any of these specific notes or requests. I can go through them all, and then we can go through, go back to any of the responses or questions to clarify, or if there's additional follow-ups the board wants to discuss.
Got it.
So, the first one was the board requested an updated project, projected construction schedule. Our initial submit was an outdated schedule. We did submit an updated schedule that should have been in the board's packet that shows the estimated start of construction through completion at this time. So, I'll happy answer any questions on updated schedule. There was a second request. We show our plan, all proposed above-ground and underground connections. The site plan has been updated to show that within the site footprint. So, you can see everything. I'll zoom in more. Everything here labeled UGE, underground electric, as well as the above-ground connections here coming off of 116, or excuse me, off of Sunderland Road, O8 cheese overhead electrical on these poles. Proceeding to underground portion of the site, then overground again, before underground back to the inverter pads. And I'll emphasize that those are conceptual, of course. Any, you know, prior to construction, we'd be submitting a fully, a fully issued per construction plan set would be signed off by an electrical engineer, and that would be submitted to go in for review and sign off. There was a request for updated site rendering specifically to ensure that all the utility pole locations were correct, as well as to include signage on the site showing where, you know, the name of the project, third identification of Blue Wave, as well as any warning signage. So, we did submit updated site renderings with those corrections. And the signage we put on the sound barrier itself, we're happy to, you know, for any suggestions or preference the board has in terms of location of signage on site. If there's preference to have it out closer to the road or on the wall near the access. There was a, the next request, the board asked for a copy of the degradation plan, that the manufacturer be okay with being made public. We were unable unfortunately to obtain permission at this time to share the exact degradation schedule. I'm happy to give a little bit of color here, just generically, as to the expected degradation. So, the degradation does generally proceed in a somewhat linear fashion over the 20 years, 20-year expected 20-year life of the batteries. The first one to two years is a larger amount of degradation in the batteries than subsequent years. For just based on the underlying chemistry of the battery cells themselves and the usage, it just works out that they tend to degrade faster in those first few years. But after those years, you would, we would expect it to degrade fairly consistently and linearly over those years. And that would result in an augmentation schedule, where we're typically going to look to install additional battery units to, again, what we'll call just top up the battery capacity. Probably once every eight, you know, eight years or so is when we would, we would love to install additional units. So, I'll point out again, I'll flip over. So, that would refer to these additional units and and hash lining here that would be, you know, a portion of them installed around seven, eight years into the operation system, and then another seven, eight years, there would be a couple more. And again, that's just to keep the capacity of the overall system at our initial megawatt hour level in order to meet our isometrion capacity obligations. So, I'm happy to, you know, put that right into the board as a condition of when we expect the augmentation to occur. And of course, you know, we're happy to submit whatever we can prior to building permit being issued. They would be final at that point. And after I give the rest of the responses, if there's more specific concern that any board members have on this specific item, I'm happy to address that. If there's something we can address with a condition for prior to issuing some of any building permit. The next comment was just to arrange the follow-up site visit. As the chair recapped, that occurred with our party's engineer, Drew Bardakis, and I believe to the satisfaction of the board. We did, there was a plus to update the emergency response plan with as much information as we can at this time, including reaching out to the Sunderland Fire Department, including their information as well. So, we did submit an updated and new iteration of the emergency response plan. We did add in a variety of additional information that we can confirm at this time. As I outlined in, or we outlined in our response, this plan will remain in draft form, and there is information in there that really won't, doesn't have an opportunity to be finalized until equip, final equipment selection is actually concrete. We have an issued per construction plan set, and we're able to have our trainings with the fire department and establish some more specific, excuse me, specific information regarding, you know, muster safety points, any final coordination with the fire department regarding the equipment or certain procedures. So, what we would suggest is just, again, and that that plan will remain quote-unquote draft until the project's fully built. ESRG, who's our safety consultant helping us on this plan, they would go out to the site and conduct the final site visit. Once the system's built, they would make sure that everything is where it's supposed to be per the plan, and they would conduct that site visit with the fire department. And at that point, a final emergency response plan would be issued for operation of the site. So, we would just request a condition from the board that 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 plan, basically an updated plan be submitted prior to issuance of the building permit. And then, basically, we could also potentially consider a condition where prior to issuance of maybe CFC from the, from the town to actually, once this is built, but before we get a certificate of completion on construction, we, ESRG have that site visit, and we issue that final plan before that, that CFC is issued.
Can I just get a clarification for you, Mr. Laracy? What does COC means what?
Oh, sorry, excuse me. So, from the building department's perspective, a COC would just be a certificate of completion. Typically, we, yeah, completion, as opposed to compliance, which we'll have to also separately get from the construction.
So, that would be, mean that before you turn this, in effect, before you turn the switch on, that the fire, police, and the building departments all have signed off on the emergency response plan? The final emergency response plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Additionally, we did reach out to the Sunderland Fire Department. I spoke with the Sunderland Fire Chief over email, informed them of the project, its location, sent over information, including the site plan and the emergency response plan at this time. They didn't have any comments or input at this time. They did emphasize that they would like to be included in any pre-construction meetings and trainings that we would coordinate with the Amherst Fire Department. So, I, we responded that we would be happy to include them in any and all meetings and trainings, and we'll continue to do so, lean up to and through construction. The next request from the board was just regarding pollinators. Our inclusion of them, whether they can be included in the plantings list. So, we did update the notes on the plan to ensure that any seed mix that's utilized for site stabilization or after site work is completed, will include pollinator-friendly landscaping species. Generally, we also do have that landscaping planting list for the visual screen. Generally speaking, there's a number of species on there that are already pollinator-friendly. There's a number of flowering shrubs and trees. So, effectively, that list is already pollinator-friendly in regard to the visual screening. And we'll, again, we included that note to ensure that any seeding mix or ground cover mix would also be a pollinator-friendly mix with some kind of, you know, flowering species, perennials, native flowering. The next comment or question board regarded was in regard to the installation of bollards on the site plans or some other acceptable item reports, the sound barrier. Basically, the concern here is a potential collision with the sound wall from specifically a vehicle, and what kind of assurances or providing evidence that that won't jeopardize the integrity of the sound wall or the equipment within the site. Our response here is based on the current design of the site. We, we don't believe the installation of bollards is necessary. We are undergoing mass DOT review on the site. We've submitted our site plans to mass DOT for an access permit, which is required due to change in the use of the site. Mass DOT has provided comments on our site plan so far. They haven't indicated that they see a need from a safety or engineering perspective for any additional barriers along the highway. Generally, we do, we do have some experience, folks at Blue Wave internally, working on projects, specifically solar, that are along the Mass Pike and along some other mass DOT routes that are pretty close to the highway where tons of high-speed vehicle traffic occurs. Generally, they don't require any additional barriers until you get within, I believe it's 10 to 15, or maybe 15 to 20 feet of the edge of the highway. And our sound barrier is approximately 100 feet away from the Sunderland Road. Additionally, there is also the mass DOT drainage ditch that's alongside the road. So, the only way a vehicle can actually, or would be able to enter the site at any speed without hitting that utilizing one of the two points of access through the semicircuit or existing driveway. So, we do feel comfortable with that there's not a threat to the sound wall from a, from vehicular impact, given the setback and that ditch and mass DOT review. If the board still has a concern that that's not adequate, or they'd like to see more, we're happy to also entertain, including bollards in the site plan. It's not, it's something we can do. So, if that's still a concern of the boards, we can, we can have those in the site plan as a condition. The next request was just considering the addition of lights and cameras to the site for added security. We did include call-outs for lights and security cameras at the proposed access gates on the northwest and southeast. So, we would install those, and there would be some additional presence there from a security perspective. The next request was in regard to the ONM plan. And specifically, there were references to biannual maintenance that was occurring, and whether or not that was meant to be biannual, so every two years, as opposed to semi-annual twice a year. So, we did correct those. They wasn't intended to be twice a year, so we did correct that ONM plan to refer to that specific, those specific maintenance items as semi-annual. There was also a request to update the ONM plan, ensure any contact information references are updating accurate. We did review it. Everything is updating accurate at this time. Once the project is closer to construction, we'll have finalized operations and maintenance contracts with regional technicians and maintenance groups. Once we have those in hand, we will update in first to the board and the building department any finalized operations and maintenance plan and contacts. So, we're also happy for a condition here that prior to building permits issued, that that final main operations and maintenance plan be submitted, and that contact information is verified, that those will be the technicians to respond to site in the need of maintenance. There was a request from the board to consider making a sound, sound barrier wall of a darker green color to help it blend into the surrounding landscape. We were, Blue Wave is happy to accommodate this request. We would just adjust the condition in a potential approval that the sound wall be that dark green color or some other color approved by the ZBA prior to issuance of building permit. We ask for that flexibility, just in the event that whatever final sound barrier, construction and contractor we utilize, the source of the material, just in the event there's not a specific shade that's exactly, say, a dark green, or we can find some other agreeable color the board finds acceptable that blends in well enough into the surrounding environment. The next request was the addition of signage to show specifically the company name, Blue Wave, the type of facility and other information from the management ONM or emergency response plan, and then include those in the site renderings. We did add additional signage details to the site plans, so those are on the detail sheet. So, we did add an additional I-bolted signature sign. We did update the signage detail for the, for the project sign itself. Specify that it is Blue Wave. It's our, the Amherst battery storage system, and then the 24-hour emergency contact number. So, and those were included on the site renderings as well. Again, we would, as with some other site details such as these, they can change for construction. So, we would again request a condition that the board review and sign off on the final signage prior to issuance of the building permit. And again, if there's a preference from the board in terms of putting the signs out by the road or on the sound barrier close to the system, we're happy to accommodate the board's preference. There was a comment on, I think, a site visit as to whether any trees that are currently on site will remain after construction. I'll reference the site plan, and I'll zoom in here. So, it can be a little tricky to see. So, this, this symbol right here, this references an existing tree. So, there is an existing tree here. It's hard to see here, but there's one right where my cursor is, if you can see it, underneath where the post gravel access road is. And then there's the, a larger existing tree further to the south. All guys with a slow scroll. Right here, just, just east of the, southeast of the access road entrance. So, currently, those, these two trees to the north would be, have to be removed as part of construction. They are smaller trees. Currently, here's the one at the southeast. As of right now, we would not propose to disturb or remove the tree of the southeast as it's outside of the limit of work. And of course, if somehow the design changes to where there somehow, we, the footprint and the system strength, or some other, some other need arose that meant that we no longer had to take up as much space, we would do our best to try to reconfigure the site to not disturb these two trees. By this time, we would be proposing to remove those two trees and leave the one to the south intact. The next item relates to a question as to why the southern portion of the site had this sort of zigzag shape to it, and what's the reasoning behind that, and I'll go straight here on the site plan. So, that refers to, basically, the southwest portion here. The snow bear comes in. And then... And then cuts in here, comes down, cuts again. In general, the battery systems themselves also kind of the, the equipment pads zigzag down toward the southeast portion of the site. The reasoning behind the specific layout, a number of factors. So as you can see, or maybe not too easily see on the site plan, there's obviously a lot of underlying buffers and setbacks we're trying to respect with our site plan. So we have the wetland buffers, the riverfront buffer at the east. We also have generally the, we try to respect a one-hundred-foot setback from all property lines in accordance with, or I should say in accordance with the F B A, but current F B A guidelines on remote systems. So generally speaking, we, and then also there's a mapped flood, floodplain boundary to the south as well. So all those factors restrict our site in multiple ways to create this kind of unique shape. And then on top of that, generally, we just want to keep it as tight as possible to the containers, reduce our footprint as much as possible, while also making sure we meet the minimum clearances we need from the fence line or the sound barrier to the battery equipment itself. Their setback distances we have to achieve there. And really, it just ends up resulting in this sort of zigzag shape. So for example, you know, we could, and then a further, further comment as to, well, why don't you just make it a regular rectangle, add more batteries? There is also, from the grid perspective, there is a limit to how much capacity we can have. So I think I mentioned it the last year ago, I'll reiterate it here again as well. We are, we have studied this project with eighteen point seven megawatt, or five four eighteen point seven megawatts with ever source. The project cannot go above that. So even if we, even if those wetland buffers weren't here, we were able to expand the site footprint beyond where it is today, it would be to no, no use to us because we wouldn't be able to put any more battery units in. So, so that's really this exact shape just results out of these various site setbacks and factors. And then basically just trying to keep the footprint as minimal as possible to fit that capacity we need for the eighteen point seven megawatts. And then the final question or a comment that arose, I believe, again, after the site visit, just would we consider working with any local artists or any kind of art mural or installation on the sound barrier wall? We're happy to, we're certainly happy to work or talk with local artists about a potential art installation on the wall. From our perspective, we would just want to first make sure there's no conflict that could arise with any sort of electrical fire, safety code, just visibility of the wall. If that can cause a concern, if, if the art mural or installation is on, I'll spare that. But certainly from our perspective, we, that sounds like a great idea. And we would, we would really appreciate the opportunity to add something like that to the, the local landscape of Amherst. So, so I, I don't think it's, it's not a scenario we can commit to. Or we can, we can certainly commit to exploring the possibility at first from a code perspective and then also in connection with local artists. But I just wanted to say that Blue Wave is happy to look into that as a, as a possibility. And that was our responses. So I'll stop there. Board members have any specific questions or clarifications they'd like to have answered on any of our specific processes?
I have a couple of questions and then I'll open it up to the rest of the board members. So I, I found a model of the signage. Where do you propose those, those signs to be affixed? Are you looking at a monument sign that's out in front or are you fixing them to the, the sound barrier?
Um, in the site renderings, we're proposing to fix them to the sound barrier. We could certainly put them as a monument out by the road. I think it would just, that's where we would defer to the preference of the board. I don't think we would have a preference either way and we could, we could accommodate either, either design.
Let me just say that if you, if you put it on the sound barrier, you, you run the risk of the trees blocking it so you can't see it. And it does, it lends sort of less, it lends more credibility to the site that is, it's not something odd if there's a monument sign out in front. So people won't go by and say, but in the hell, what is this? Let's go investigate or what is this? It's, it's out there. It's obvious. It's open. So I would, we should, we consider what the rest of the board wishes, but I would encourage you to, to have a sign out in front or maybe that's a condition we can discuss, but as opposed to just putting it on the sound barrier. And when I was running, yep, you can do both too. Yep. When I was running through the emergency response plan, I think I saw a couple of references to a chain link fence. And I didn't see that on the, there's not a chain link fence on the site plan, is there?
Yes, apologies. So there, there was initially before we incorporated sound walls. So there's reference in the emergency response and a chain link fence. That would just be a reference that's outdated and I apologize for that. So we can, we can add that reference that, you know, a modification.
Got it. Another question I had was, in thinking about the security of the sound wall, I think the, I think the concern is that if the sound wall was breached and a vehicle or the sound barrier crashed on one of the battery storage units, what would be the danger to the community? I mean, it's, the one downside is that you would, you lose the production of that battery storage system. That's, you know, that, that would be too bad for you guys, but it's not a public, it's not a public danger. But I guess, is there any danger of fumes, emissions, anything that we would worry about if there was a breach by somebody running a truck through the sound barrier and into the battery storage modules? What would happen?
Sure. So if there was, say, a collision with a battery cabinet and there was cells or units within the battery cabinet or enclosure that were damaged. So the U L nine by forty test, macro forty eight testing that occurs for all large-scale lithium ion systems, they do similar tests at the cell level to see what happens. So they'll do, for example, a nail puncture test to see does the cell have any, exhibit any kind of elevated thermal conditions, if there's some physical damage or, or rupture of the cell. Typically, if, if there, there is some kind of physical damage, that could cause some elevated thermal conditions to the underlying cells within an enclosure. And from that perspective, we then defer again to the U L results of, okay, if there's a, a cell or a number of cells that are compromised in the system and had some kind of elevated conditions, what risk does that pose in terms of spreading or propagating throughout the system? And that's where we fall back onto the design of the system from a U L perspective, U L and F B A five-five compliance perspective, to ensure that any conditions that are, arise with any water or multiple containers, those don't themselves cause a propagation or spread of, of fire or thermal conditions to other containers. So there, there could, it could cause a localized event, maybe within an enclosure that's affected. But we would not expect it to spread or cause a wide-scale event throughout the system. That being the case, again, we're, as I mentioned, we're if this is a concern with the sound barrier, we're happy with, you know, a very flexible condition for, for a decision in terms of how that's protected again. So we're happy to include bollards along the, the front portion of the wall. And F B A has specifications on spacing and the design of bollards and we would follow that. And, or, you know, as was mentioned in the, the board's request and comments, we could do something that's either bollards incorporated into the site or, as was mentioned, some structural analysis that shows that that wall would stand up to a collision of a, of a vehicle. So we are, we are certainly more than willing to enhance that and add an extra layer of security to, to that, that concern. But we wouldn't expect a collision to cause some wide-scale event throughout the system.
So because the, of the thermal runway, I guess, is what you were talking about from last meeting. You would have, you'd have some kind of thermal event amongst the, within the cell or cells that are struck. You, you say it's unlikely that that would spread to other battery cells, that for lack of a better term. And, and you didn't, you didn't say, but there's, there, I, I guess I would ask, is there any release of any toxic chemical or gas that would come from that, that would endanger the public? And I think when, when we talked about this last meeting, there was not, but I just wanted to reaffirm that.
Sure. So if there were a fire caused, then, you know, just as with any modern structural or plastics fire, that fire could have, you know, the smoke that comes out of that fire could have, you know, or does have pollutants. You know, something you don't want to be done necessarily. It's going to be, again, because it's not going to propagate that fire, you know, would, would in theory be limited to just, just that enclosure that's affected. So when it's spread throughout the system and, and likely would be, if there is a fire and there is smoke created, that smoke would only be created for a shorter period of time. You know, typically, what's observed during most of these fires, they're, when, when they occur is that the majority of smoke production or gas production occurs within the first, say, twenty or thirty minutes of, of an event or fire and it drops off quickly after that. So, so we wouldn't expect, you know, that to cause, yeah, a wider concern for public safety in the area, or excuse me, the area from a, from a gas emission or, or smoke emission standpoint. And again, yeah, we're happy to, you know, again, prevent, provide more.
One last question and I'll open up to the rest of the board. I didn't notice any cut sheets for the lights that you were going to propose. And I'd like, you should probably do that, you should do that before you get your final site plan in. But I want to, they should be, they have to be dark sky compliant lighting as per our rules. And, and I don't, I don't think there's a condition that states that. And if there isn't, we might have that. I think we would include that in our conditions, but they have to comply with, you know, downcast. You're not really going to have trespass on nearby property, I would think, because they're, but downcast to, you know, to keep from light pollution and for nature and birds and everything else.
Yeah.
Those are my, so you're, you're, you're fine with that?
Absolutely. Yeah, we'd be happy to commission with all Amherst, dark sky and other Amherst regulations on light.
All right. Questions from other board members? Ms. Marshall?
I have two topics. So since we were just talking about the signs, the warnings, well, maybe three. If, so one of the signs is high danger, high voltage, if it really is hazardous to the, to trespassers, I would suggest putting those signs on all sides of the, of the structure. Just because, you know, who knows? There are people farming in the, in the field to the east and I don't know. If, I mean, if it really is a hazard, I, I think more than one sign would be, would be wise. Bollards, I also, I wonder on the east side, which is next to the farm, the, the field. If that is right, I, my recollection, I may be wrong, is that's very close to the property line or, or the, the, the limit of what you are leasing? I just wonder if you might consider putting, especially since there are no plantings along that east wall, to have something to protect that wall from the farm equipment that may be turning or, or doing whatever, whatever is done. But that's really more protecting your asset, I think, than, than against any danger to the public. But then thirdly, I'm confused, or rather, I think there's inconsistency between the site plan, what we're looking at right now, and a rendering. And so maybe I misunderstand, but I'm looking at the access road that then curves and goes through the wall. So those ovals to the west of that access road, those are plantings, the ovals and the circles, yes?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So this shows that those plantings hug the wall until that access road. And then they're on the other side between the access road and the highway, right? Okay. That's not what we see in the renderings.
Right. So here, they're depicted, basically the access road separates the wall and the plantings on the rendering there. The, the plantings are directly against the wall.
So which, yes. So which, which do you intend to build?
That's sorry, and I apologize for that consistency. I would say we, we can build either one and again, it would be a preference of the board. I think we look to bump it out on this side mainly to have that access clearance to the wall so we can have. Also, just put the, the plantings a little farther out to the road in that area, provides a little maybe better screening, at least along that side. So we could go either way and, and put the plantings as they are on the, more toward the south, directly adjacent to the wall. We will have to, it, it would get tighter here. So the plantings might just be more limited if they're directly adjacent to the wall. So we don't cut into too much into the drainage ditch and then the access road itself. Or we can, we can keep them on the other side, which would probably, which would enable us to do a little bit more. So I'm happy to defer to the board's preference in terms of, from a design perspective, I would say we're ambivalent to either option, but if it's, if the board views one way better than the other from the visual perspective, we do. We're, we're.
I would say aesthetically, I like what's on the site plan, but there is a difference. I mean, I guess, I'm not sure anyone can see me at the moment, but on the rendering, there's a lot more gravel or just, just hardscape force. And so you would be giving some of that up. This is doesn't, you know, there's just less, less gravel or dirt for vehicles to be driving on compared to what's in the rendering. So if that's acceptable to you, the site plan, that's, it is what I would prefer, but.
Unfortunately, one with the renderings, just the process that our consultant uses, the renderings, when they have to adjust to, when they import the topography from Google Earth and the way they kind of adjust the, to represent different ground conditions. I will say the rendering shows, I think it's, it's aggressive in how much of that, like you were pointing out gravel in that, in this area is shown. So I would say what, what, what the site plan, I would refer to the site plan in terms of the actual extent of, say, gravel features on the, on the road. So even if these plantings were here in this area, this wouldn't be gravel. We would leave it as grass or undisturbed if possible.
Okay.
But if, but if you would prefer, you know, we'd be happy for, be a condition as, as like a plan modification or I shouldn't say plan modification, maybe just a condition, just, you know, that the, the vegetated screen as proposed matches the site plan or matches the site plan dated and submitted and is installed that in that area across the access road.
Okay.
And then.
Yeah.
All right.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'd say to answer your other two questions, I certainly agree with, yeah, good. I think it's a good idea. We can include signage along all four sides of the system. So if anyone's approaching from any direction, they could, they would see that signage. And probably along the eastern boundary, we might put signage to two places. And then bollards, it's a good point as well on, on the potential farm equipment that might be operating in the eastern portion of the site. So if, if, you know, we'll, we'll revisit that with the landowner. If there is expected to be any heavy machinery or farm equipment operating in that eastern portion, then we would, you know, we're, we're again, also we can install bollards or some of the protection along the eastern boundary. And if that's, that could also be a condition acceptable to us with the board that, you know, if there is going to be farming, farming machinery, any heavy machinery operated on site while the system's in operation, that there is protection provided.
Right. I mean, you can always, one can just drop big rocks. You don't have to set bollards in concrete and, oh, you know.
Be something, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Chair, I have one more little one, but I could wait.
Go ahead.
All right. About the, you mentioned the emergency response plan and that you'll be, you know, you can't finish it until your construction during, well, maybe until you've actually installed everything and you'll submit it to the two fire departments. I'm not sure what the, what, what is normal, but do you, do you ask for a sign off from those two fire departments that they, you know, that, that contains all the information they think is necessary for them?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. And it's, I think our procedure would be present that plan to the fire department or rather go over the, the, whatever that iteration of the plan is at that time, ideally final. And yeah, basically, I don't know if they would need to say, sign it, but we would, we would want to make sure they've reviewed it and don't have any further questions or concerns about it. And yeah, that's a, but written or email sign off from the fire departments confirming, yes, you know, we've reviewed. Uh written or email sign off from the fire departments confirming, yes, you know, we've reviewed the plan, we've we've undergone training on the plan. And then to the site with the consultant to visit it and and understand how the plan relates to the site as built. Uh and then they are comfortable with that plan and and how, what they're supposed to do in any event, so. Yeah, so we would propose a a simple confirmation from the fire department to ZDA or the building department. Uh or rather, yeah, the building department, uh once that's done, I think we'll we'll work on our end.
Okay.
The the condition as drafted in the draft requires submission to the fire department and. And the police to the to the fire and police department. And also submission to the, so plans will be reviewed by fire and police and submitted to the building commissioner for approval. Prior to the issuance of a building permit and then the the final one is later on and I would think we'd need the same process before this. As you called it, the COC or sort of this, I think of it as certificate of occupancy or in a residential way, you know, but before you flip the switch. My my intent would be that before you flip the switch, that the emergency response plan has been approved. By the um building commissioner and or fire and and uh police. And I can't imagine the building commissioner would approve something that the fire and police have reviewed and found um wanting or or. Insufficient.
Right, that's my concern, that submitting is one thing, but knowing that it's acceptable is is another.
Rob, Mara, is that um is your understanding that it it comes to you, you? You defer your judgment about safety to the fire and the police? Or is you work this through cooperatively or collegially or what, how do you deal with that?
So these are actually done joint inspection uh as a team. Uh and it's electrical uh fire and building inspectors together uh before any final. Uh you know, final completion or approvals are granted, everybody is in agreement. Uh most of the inspections uh at key points are are done jointly like that. Um you know, structural and other inspections, electrical inspections may happen independently, but. Uh certainly by the end at a final, it's all all done together and all the inspectors are communicating about it.
Okay. So if we have, you have to be the person to approve plan. If sufficient um input has been received from fire and from police.
Yeah, that makes sense because we actually, we actually process the permit applications for the fire department through our office. And transmit them over to to their uh fire inspector, so uh that that's the way we would prefer to uh function.
Good. Great. Rob, the other Rob, I see your hand up, Rob Wachilla.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, so I kind of wanted to go back earlier about um Ms. Marshall's point about vegetative screening, so. Um essentially what they have listed on the site plan for location of plantings, they have to honor that because. They're basically building and constructing everything to the site plans. Plus any minor additions they might do after the fact before getting their building permit, but I would recommend to the board that they should. If they want to instill a condition specifically stating that vegetable planning shall be designed as such in the site plan, just to reiterate your point. And also um in terms of the ERP uh after discussing with Mr. Moore about this uh a week ago. They don't have to physically sign off on the document itself per se, but it is wise for both fire and police to review it and then. Given to the building commissioner at the same time that they submit their final site plans, that could be acceptable as well, uh that's all I had.
Um Ms. Parks, I think you had your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, thank you for your detailed answers for everything here and I just wanted to say, you know, I was the person who suggested the dark green color. And I don't want to add any expense to your project or anything else, you know, if the soundproofing wall only comes in. Brown or, you know, whatever color, you know, I wouldn't want to make it a condition that you paint the wall if it's if it doesn't. If it's not readily available like that, I'm just. My concern is I don't want it to look like a penitentiary, so more more natural colors, uh less industrial color. Um but I, but again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote no because of the color of the fence.
No, appreciate that and and like and certainly Blue Wave also has an interest and we we want this to to blend in as much as possible as well and and not not stand out, so. Um like I said, we're we're happy representing that we'll we're we'll pursue the color that blends in most naturally into that environment, which, yeah, like you pointed out, likely a dark green color. Um and then, like I said, we're we're happy to just at the time of this sound barrier construction, um or rather procurement for construction. We can simply identify what colors are are available and consult with the 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 planning department um for the board as to. Here are the colors available, um which one is the one that the the board or town would prefer, um and we can go about like that.
All right, thank you.
Are there other questions? From the board? Mr. Lercy, I had one, I I I've been, I've driven past this a couple of times and um. And it was written, and I do think it was really helpful to be able to walk the site with the um with the flags out so we could see where, how it actually physically sits on that. It's really helpful for your engineer to do that, but one thing I was thinking about is the. You're you're not proposing landscaping around the front of the building, um you know, the time, the space between one sixteen and. The um the oval driveway or on the left or the right of that as you're facing from with your back to one sixteen. And you're facing the facility, but there's a lot of, it it's just kind of um. Tacky grass that's there, it's it just doesn't look very good. And I wouldn't want, I I don't think it should be, I'm not looking for a golf or anything like that, but it just, I just know that it's gonna. It unless it's kind of managed, it's gonna look pretty good, kind of lousy. What if you have a real landscape plan that involves any of that, what is your plan for that? Willing to put some kind of. You know, work to have uh native grasses or maybe other native species and removal of some invasive species. That are obvious as you drive down one sixteen, I'm not worried about behind it, I'm not worried about the. I guess it's the north and the south ends because I think those are all, mostly those are the water districts, you can't touch anything in there anyway, but just some of that area out in front. Um the rendering has some grasses growing up a lot of different places, but that's. Uh uh I think that was part of the glitch of Google Earth, so tell me what you're, what you'd be interested or willing to think about. For just making it look a little bit nicer or being more native plant friendly so that we do have some benefit to the the landscaping that's there.
Sure, yeah, um yeah, so I mean, generally, as a as a principle, we we tend to any area we. We don't need to touch, we try not to more as a as a. In an effort to appear to lowest impact possible, um but to to your point, kind of in this area between the system and the road. Um obviously, within the drainage easement, um.
Right.
Yes, we can't do that since that DOT is for a territory, but the area in between um. You know, I I think, again, right now, it's pretty much contemplated to be left as is, but we're happy to look into, since we're already proposing, for example, any disturbed or. You know, there obviously, there will be construction on the site, there will be um some machinery, some trucks coming in and out, there will be stabilization needed, probably replanting the grass. So we're happy to um where possible, along the front portion of the property, we're certain, we're happy to to expand that seating, for example, of the of like a native. Uh uh pollinator flowering uh like kind of like a brineal, maybe like a meadow, if you call it mix.
Right.
Um yeah, we're happy to take, you know, any anywhere where we can expand along the front of like seating, uh we we could, we're happy to to do that as well. Um and uh uh so, yeah, I I, yes, we're we're happy to 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 expand if possible, I don't see it being something feasible and um. Obviously, we we probably wouldn't go as far as saying to, you know, tear up the sod and replant or anything like that. Um but yeah, we're we're happy to to maybe if it's a condition or. Where feasible or where possible, the applicant could um expand the planting of of uh native pollinators, native flowering mixes. Uh you know, along the the portion of the the property uh abutting the uh southern road.
Okay, so some, there you have some language about that um it for a pair of disturbed soil, perhaps we can come up with a condition. For the front of the building, the front of the property fit between the street and the front of the building. Um and it sounds like you'd be amenable to that, thank you, Mr. Meadows.
Curious about.
She breaking up.
Craig, we can't hear you, we can't hear you.
Your plug.
You must have the same air air pods that I do. Seems to happen to me. There we go. A wired connection, always stronger than Bluetooth or Wi-Fi. No, not yet. Try those AirPods again. Try the AirPods again.
Mr. Chair, can we use the chat? Can we use the chat?
Oh, yeah, he could use a chat. Yep. That is somebody with a lot of Zoom experience that came up with that suggestion.
Did you hear that, Craig? Type into the chat, maybe.
We, somebody should type to him. Oh, that's good spelling.
Use the chart function?
Yeah, it's the chat function, you got it, it just worked, it meant chat. Yeah.
We can also hear you, Craig, as well.
Okay, let me see if I can do this.
Craig, we were able to hear you just now, I don't know if you were aware, um your microphone is working again.
Is it now?
Yeah, you can hear you, sorry, sorry about that, we should have told you.
I I can talk faster than I can type, okay, um. One simple question, what are the sizes of the inverters?
Yeah, good question, let me uh off the top of my head, I believe there are three uh three thousand four hundred fifty uh kilowatt inverters. Um I believe our very initial application, we submitted a cut sheet of them, but there should be three, as expected, SMA semi-central three, four, five, zero uh KW inverters.
Okay, thank you. Um and the second thing, I noticed that you have three options for extensions on your lease. What is the base contract?
Uh the base would be twenty years, one, one, one term of twenty years and then uh the each optional extension would be uh five years each.
It said six months each.
Oh, sorry, um that would be our, sorry, um so our our current agreement, which is an option to lease, that would be six months. Um the actual agreement we would enter into, uh that we're we're looking at it to that the liner would be a long term lease, that would have an initial term of twenty years with three, five year extension after.
And that does align with the utility contract you've got?
Um we, yes, we expect to do typically all projects whenever we intercut the utility. Um there typically the interconnection service uh really goes as long as we're uh where the the system is on and powered, so. Um generally, we never have issues with going beyond twenty years if if we want to continue operating.
And is your utility contract for um the full eighteen megawatts or is it somewhat less?
Right now, it's it's for the eighteen point seven megawatts, um there, the project is still, the study for the project is still active with Eversource. So there is still a possibility that Eversource could come back um and requires to change the size of the the system. Um again, not above, we would never go more than what we have now, if there's a possibility to go less, but for now, it is the eighteen point seven.
You don't have any fudge factor in there?
Um when you say fudge factor in terms of uh general oversizing the system or?
Well, as as you get degradation, you're not going to be able to provide the uh the entire amount.
Right, correct, so the the initial number of installed battery units is slightly over, so the eighteen point seven megawatts AC. Four hour battery, um again, translating that, uh I don't have the, my math is not good enough right now for that, but around seventy five megawatt hours. Um that that number were slightly oversized from the beginning, so we're roughly ten to fifteen percent oversized. Uh to provide, you know, uh above and beyond that initial uh capacity limit. Uh then as it degrades, so we start oversized, we degrade down, once we get to a point where we would drop below. Uh what that max capacity we're allowed to to discharge at and what we would have a contractual obligation with ISO New England to provide. Then we would augment, and so that's where those additional unit uh that enhanced hatched markings along the southern portion of the site. Those are, those would remain empty initial installation and we would add those additional units later to stay at at our uh initial capacity.
I assume that you're controlling remotely, are you controlling or is uh? I saw New New England controlling.
So we're controlling, so we'll have a twenty four seven remote operations center controlling the system and controlling all dispatch, charging and discharging. Um typically, we can basically charge and discharge. Uh when we want or, you know, whatever price signals are in the market that ISO New England's running. If there's any capacity call, so if ISO New England is, you know, issues a fast recall, we may be required to charge discharge during the specific high demand times. Uh but we would, we would be the ones in the system.
Okay, and your cybersecurity is coming out of? In what level?
Um I would have to follow up I with uh the manufacturer on the exact level. Um typically, we're going to ensure, you know, obviously a very high level uh of localized security for the system data itself. Uh and then in terms of data traffic going out of the site, um a secure connection and cryptic connection going directly to our remote operations center so that. You know, no one can can speak on that, um but I, there's a specific uh reference array you're looking for there, I'm happy to to provide that.
No, I I just wanted to make sure that it is, it is secure and um your controller is not obvious.
Oh, yes, absolutely, so physically speaking, there's a, there's a level of physical security for the controllers, so those are all in locked cabinets, so if someone wanted to. Get a physical connection to the system, that would be, you know, extremely difficult, uh and we would, we would know if someone were tampering with the system remotely. Uh and then, yeah, all any trafficking outside would be encrypted uh as well.
Okay, that's all I had.
You know, I I had one question that's really very basic, I don't, I never have, I don't know. How much power you've got in that battery and those batteries, what eighteen point seven five megawatts really means in terms of. How many homes it could light up, how long it could, you know, how how much power is going to be in those batteries? And how much benefit would the community get from having those batteries come online? Not not from a sense of power, not from the um cost savings, but from the sense of what you can light up, what you can power with that.
Yeah, that's that's a great question, so uh generally speaking, um so obviously, everything's measured in kilowatt hours, megawatt hours. so obviously everything's measured in kilowatt hours, megawatt hours. So our system is 18.7 megawatts, four-hour battery. So again, let's just call it around 75 megawatt hours. That's, so that's what could be charged in a day and discharged in a day or in a four-hour period, charge and discharge. Your average home, so, you know, a lot of appliances you have are in kilowatt hour, kilowatt rating, so washing machine, HVAC units or wattages, typically an average annual homes' energy usage. Depending obviously on how big it is and where you're at in the country, but let's just call it somewhere between nine and 11,000 kilowatt hours a year. That would be like a typical homes' annual energy usage. So from that perspective, every day a battery system would be charging to charging enough energy that could power a single home's annual usage, or I should say around six to seven annual homes' usage. So there's all quite a bit of energy that's being charged and discharged every day and certainly every year with the system. So in terms of what, what these systems are intended to be utilized for, which is really shifting that clean energy generated to when it's, when most demand is most. It's actually making quite a bit of impact in terms of, you know, the amount of homes that are using electricity and how much energy is in carbon emissions or subsequently offset.
Great. Thank you. Other questions from the board? Mr. Larissy, is there anything else you wish to advise us on or comment on before we go to public comment?
I don't think so. Again, I appreciate all the questions and clarifications. And, yeah, look forward to moving, moving the project forward.
Now's the opportunity for the public to comment. Staff will help identify if there are, if there is anybody who wishes to ask the question of the the applicant. Again, the questions must be directed to the chair and staff will recognize you if you're on the computer, raise your hand. If you're on the phone, press nine. I see no raised hands.
Nope.
So one last opportunity for us to ask questions if we have any further questions for the applicant. All right, if not, I would. We now will move to the public meeting. And I would move, we'll move to the public meeting without closing the public hearing in case we need to gather additional information. And the public meeting is typically where the board deliberates on the the matter before us. It is not normally a time for public comment, but we reserve the right to get comment, especially from the applicant for clarification. I'm looking, I'll tell you where I'm kind of coming from in this, this specific application is I'm inclined to believe that the applicant Blue Wave has responded positively to most of the suggestions and questions we had. It seems to me that there's a real need for this kind of enterprise across the country and be beneficial to the community as well. And I'm inclined to move ahead with perhaps a couple of additional conditions, but to move ahead with this application. I'd love to get the feeling of the board and we can talk about specific conditions or concerns you might have. But do I have any, does anybody have additional comments they want to make at this time? Okay. So if there are no further questions and no further comments, what I'd like to do is go to conditions first. Review conditions that we have. And then adopt them in block by going through them. If anybody, as we always do, if anybody objects to a specific condition, we'll set it aside. So I'd like to deal with the ones that were in the, in the project application report first, first, and then move to the, any additional new conditions, second. So if we look at the project application report, page 25, at the end of page 25, the possible conditions start. The first one is sort of boilerplate. But the topic is the mention that it has to be, this really requires this project to be built as per the plans that have been submitted and approved. And so those, to that extent, to the wall, talking about the wall and about the, the placement of the plants, et cetera, et cetera, all that has to be done with the possible exception of minor changes, which can be approved by the business commissioner. The second one is that no longer, the conditions in the former special, special permit have expired. Third is that the, a new owner must be, have a management plan submitted and reviewed by the zoning board of appeals at a public meeting. All previous approvals and conditions authorized by the conservation commission shall be adhered to at all times. We don't have to. Those conditions are contained in that document. We don't have to list all those conditions. Number five, the emergency management plan shall be reviewed by the Amherst Fire and Police Departments and shall be submitted to the building commissioner for approval prior to the issue of a building permit. And I think we would want to add that it has, similarly, it has to be submitted to the fire and police and approved by the building commissioner prior to the certificate, to the COC, certificate of occupancy, or what would be the terminology we want to use there, Rob? So that, I mean, this is a building permit, which is one thing, but you're going to have stuff actually on site and you have to have a second approval, I think. Or do you not?
I would, I would just say final approval. That'll cover.
Final approval instead of.
Right.
Instead of building permit, okay, all right.
Sorry, final approval by whom?
Building commissioner. It says submitted to the building commissioner for approval prior to issues of final, well, we'll rework that. Shall be submitted to the building commissioner for final approval, for final approval. Right?
But it was before the COC is what we were talking about earlier, so.
So COC is not a real thing that gets issued by the building department. So that's why I'm saying, I'm suggesting that that it's state shall be submitted to the building commissioner prior to final approval. And that will cover all the various inspections and sign-offs by all of the officials.
So submitted, submitted to you before final approval and it wouldn't be, you don't give final approval without approving it. So final approval is your discretion, so we don't have to empower you to approve it. Got it? Okay. The Amherst Sunderland Fire Department shall be properly notified and trained on the property, on the appropriate emergency response techniques. Alarms shall be installed on underground water storage tanks indicate whether failed sump, sump pumps, I think that's supposed to be. Or are they sub pumps, Rob? I think it's sump pumps. Yeah, okay, or tank overflow.
That's a typo, my bad. I apologize.
Yeah. The sound barrier wall must be painted green. Let's, I would like to alter that to say something to the effect that the, the the sound barrier wall shall be painted a color intended to blend into the environment, or you had indicated you may want to look to a mural, or is is, is there a, like a public art commission, Rob, or somebody that in town would review this? So I don't want to make it too difficult for you to, to hire a local artist to do a mural or to paint. But there are some pretty cool things done in the valley here, and I'd like to give you that opportunity. So how about if we, a lot that a color that blends into the environment, which then, which I think green is one, but there'd be several. Or to work with the, to, to work to with the approval of the finer, the public arts commission, a design on the, design approved by the, the public arts commission, something to that effect. What do you think? The board, Rob? Mora?
So, so there wouldn't actually be a requirement to submit to the art, public art commission for, for a private installation like this? So, you know, we, we might be able to work on some wording about, you know, recommendation by, seek recommendation prior to, you know, I, I think of when we, if you remember, I think you were here, Mr. Judge, when we issued the permits for a rise up in North Amherst.
Yep.
And, you know, that went through a, a process of, a public process and, and, you know, kind of their own request for proposals by artists' process more, more critical than, than our process was. So, you know, I think, I think maybe recommendations by a committee that's experienced, but ultimately this board would control when and how that happens. So I think the condition has to start here. You know, whether you're requiring it or leaving it as an opportunity to occur if the applicant chooses to take it, clarifying that. And then my only other suggestion is that there'd be some language that would allow or have the board review the landscape plan if that, you know, mural option was taken because the plants would block everything that was, all the work that was just done if, if the landscape plan was maintained.
What does the board think about that? Have we made it too, a good thing too complicated? Sarah, Ms. Marshall?
Yeah, I, I wonder though if we have to address, there seem to be two proposals, one to make or, or hopes, wishes, that the entire wall all the way around be a color that blends in with the environment versus a mural or some art that might only be on the roadside. So I just throw that, throw that out.
I guess, Ms. Parks, you're, you actually were there at the site visit when this came up as well.
I don't think we should have anything in the conditions about the mural. It's just a nice idea. And, you know, it's something that they could, you know, that it would be nice if, 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 if they would look at that and as that as a possibility. But I really don't think it should be a condition. I don't think it should be, I, I don't think that anything should matter about that for this project. So I will, I'll just say I'd like you to think about, but it not as a condition.
But you would, you wouldn't, you wouldn't think that they would have, would you have, want them to come back to the ZBA if they wanted to do a mural? Or just do it on their own? If they want to do a mural, they do a mural? Is that what you're thinking?
I don't know. I, I think we should let that idea go for now. I, I think there's enough conditions on the project and it's a really big project. And so I, it's I, I prefer not to add, add things that aren't necessary right now. So.
Got it. Mr. Maxfield?
Boy, I think it may be a way to kind of simplify this. Well, while satisfying everybody here with this is we could say that it's going to be a natural color for the fence, or the applicant may choose to work with a local artist to paint a mural. We could say something like that. So it is that, or they can do that if it ends up making sense. Do people like that idea?
We'd leave it up to the to Blue Wave to decide. Do we need to approve that? You're not, you're not suggesting that it comes back to the ZBA for approval, for the design?
We, we could also just put in if they so choose, that we could, just whatever, whatever we want to terms, we want to put on the, the mural. Just say it has to be some green, brown, natural color, or if you want to do a mural, and then whatever conditions we want to do on a mural, and then we can kind of, kind of let it go from there. That way we're not bogging them down, but if it ends up being a great idea and everybody loves it, there we go, we get the mural.
And that works for me. And I, I don't really want to be in the business of approving a mural in terms of public, and no, and none of you should want me to be in that position either, with my takes. So Rob, can you kind of come up with, can you come up with some language that works with that? I mean, it's pretty close to what we're talking about.
Yeah, so basically, and I'm assuming you're talking to me, Rob, right? Not Rob Mora? Just, he's about to, he's about to turn on his microphone just now. So I could just word it and say that you have to make the wall color blend in with the environment. That's, that's a condition the board wants to see, but the mural portion can be optional if the applicant so chooses to. That's kind of how I'm going to approach it.
Okay, or the applicant can choose to have a mural.
Yep.
And, and if the I think Rob's part about the landscaping makes sense, but you can work a mural around those trees if, if you're going to have a mural. So all right. It looks to me like we have three or four people that agree with that. So assuming that that is the will of the board, we'll move on unless anybody wants to segregate that out. An updated construction schedule with accurate date shall be submitted to the building commissioner prior to the issuance of building permit. Construction logistics must be submitted prior to the issuance of a building, building permit. Load calculations must be provided to the underground withstand weight of necessary vehicles or equipment prior to issuance of a building permit. All structure associated with the battery energy storage system shall be removed within one year of said, prior, prior to the issuance of a building permit for the best. The applicant shall post and submit a bond or other financial security acceptable to the building commissioner. The submission must be accompanied by a decommissioning plan with an accurate decommissioning cost generated by a registered engineer with a 20-year escalation to account for inflation and public, and a public projects factor. Special permit is granted to BWC Eastman Brook LLC of PO, Box 171381, Boston, Massachusetts. If the owner of the battery storage system were to change, the new owner must come before the zoning board to review the conditions of the special permit. Those are the ones contained in the draft. There are some other ones that were raised as possibility. Yes, Ms. Marshall?
I have a question about condition one. D.
Yep.
Degradation. If that's the thing Mr. Meadows had requested, I don't think we're getting that. So should that be, or is this something else?
I think that is it. Well, Mr. Meadows, you were the one that were asking about it. Is what they said, does that satisfy your interest?
Yes, that satisfied my interest. Additionally, you just mentioned a 20-year demolition plan. If you recall, I asked him about the timeline and he's got a 20-year lease with three, five-year extensions possible. So I think we need to word that a little bit differently.
I'll just, I'll just ask a question. Yeah, 20-year initial lease with extensions, but.
So you're breaking up, but I thought you, did you accept the notion of a 20-year with five, with three, five-year extensions? A surety bond based on that number? Okay, I don't know what that does to the price of the bond.
For me, yeah, that's, that's good, good on Blue Wave then.
Okay, so we can. Yep, Mr. Watchella?
Yeah, so I just want to give some background on these bonds. So usually they're renewed annually. So every bond company that I've dealt with working in where they usually send an automatic renewal every year to the town, and that's just standard practice. The 20-year escalation factor is more for the cost of decommissioning the facility. So say if the applicant were to choose a different form of surety, so they, if they didn't want to do the bond, they would rather do like a cash deposit instead. I don't really see a lot of people do that nowadays, but if they wanted to, they would give us an amount to cover the costs 20 years from now of removing those units and restoring the site. So that's what the escalation factor is put in there for. I caution against making it overly complicated with the language for that, because at any point, the building commissioner could request that they give us new numbers after a certain amount of time. So that's, that's basically what that condition's entailing. I just want to make the board aware of that.
Ms. Marshall, is your point to the, to the surety bond or, or not?
No, back to my original question.
All right, let's get back to that in a sec. We'll get back to that in a second on degradation. I, I don't want to lose the train of thought here. Mr. Meadows?
I, I think 20 years sounds good, but if they've got, if they opt for the three, five-year extensions, then we're talking about 35 years. So we have to have some mechanism to account for the additional cost if it goes to 35 years as opposed to 20 years.
I see. Okay, so.
Yeah, that's.
Does the board want to consider then adding some extra language that says if those options are executed, then account for them as well in the estimate? Yeah, okay. Yeah, definitely add that.
Or at the time, at the time there, those options are exercised. That might be the way to do it is to opposed to imposing the cost of a 35-year bond. Within 20 years plus, then when they exercise the option, there's an additional, they have to come back with an additional bond, additional. Larger bond. What I mean to say.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Do we need to have that restated? But I think I think you got the gist of that. I don't think we need to have that restated here. Okay, Ms. Marshall, you want to go back to degradation?
Yeah, just that we don't have, we don't have a degradation plan, so I don't think it should be in this list. Right?
Well, that's that's true, but there was a, isn't there some kind of representate? Didn't you say that?
Well, this is listing what that we have received. Do we have, I mean, it's implied that it's in writing and it's not, so should just eliminate it. Unless unless. We want the applicant to put in writing what was represented to us earlier in the meeting and call it a degradation.
Yeah, but that's what I thought you, that's what I thought he was going to do is put something in writing of which would memorialize how he. Represented that to the board.
Confirm that then. Thank you.
Yep. Is that right? Mr. Larsey, you're willing to do that, right?
Yeah, sorry, I get right away when I said earlier regarding general degradation and then an anticipated augmentation.
Great. I think that's that's to satisfy your concerns. Does it? Mrs. Marshall? Great, thank you. Anybody else? All right, let's move to other conditions. The board should discussing whether still a condition on sound measurement post ensure compliance with the noise assessment carried out by Epsilon. You know, I I would, I normally would want to do a second, you know, or once you're, once you're up and running to check it, and I think that's probably makes some sense, but it. I guess we should just do it once, but the level of noise coming from this is really pretty low. I mean, we're talking level of kind of conversation is what is what I saw in the plan. The highest level was probably was forty-five or fifty decibels, which is at the street level and and it seems pretty low. I know that there's some concern, but some energy battery systems buzz, but this one, I don't know if that is the case here. What's the board's feeling on this? My feeling is that it's probably one check. After you switch this switch on, have Epsilon come back and and make a noise assessment. But I wouldn't do much more than that. Because I think they're pretty, I think it's pretty low. Okay. Okay, we talked about the sound barrier wall. Is there a desire to require bollards or? Not or is there or is the is it the feeling of the board that they that the security is to be adequate in that? If there is a light, if the if the if the sound barrier is not sufficient to protect the perceived threats. Except for the farm equipment that would take it upon that the owner of the property would put those bollards up on their own. On their own volition and would just have to go to the building commissioner to get an amendment plan to do that. Ms. Parks.
I don't think it should be a condition, but I I mean, it's on them if if something happens to the facility. And it's not really going to damage the environment because they have the drainage system. And so I think, I mean, if I were them, that this is a consideration for them more than it is for us, I think. So I wouldn't make it a condition, but you know, they should think about those things and I hope they're, I don't know what the what the. I know the wall has I-beams, but I don't know what the material is in between, so you know, that's something that they should look into.
I'm inclined to agree with that. I don't think it creates a lot of public health risk. And chances of it are pretty low of the of a vehicle crashing into it. So I I agree with you that it's probably on on them to protect their investment more than it is to protect the public health.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Can I speak to that?
Ms. Marshall. Yeah, you sure can.
My interest in bollards or rocks or whatever, some kind of barrier. Is because of two concerns and if those concerns are relayed, then then I withdraw the the whole suggestion. One, that it's not a danger to the public if something crashes through the wall. And strikes one of those units. You know, the driver of the vehicle, obviously, that's that's a problem, but it's not a danger to the public. If that's true, then okay. And second of all, it's not, it's not going to throw our power grid into into chaos. If some part parts of it or if the whole thing has to be taken offline to deal with whatever the damage has been caused. Those those are the reasons I'm I'm interested. Otherwise, it's a matter of you protecting your very valuable equipment.
It was my impression that the first question was answered by Mr. Larsey early on, I mean, earlier. By saying that it very if you you might have a fire for a while, it's very small likelihood of that. And then it's a small fire, so it's not a lot of, I I came away from that thinking there wasn't a lot of danger, risk of danger and threat to the public's safety. I can't believe this is going to, if it would go down, I can't believe that it's large enough to endanger. Or even to seriously affect the our grid out here, but I that is something I don't know. So I guess I just look to Mr. Larsey to to affirm that or or not.
Sure, so happy to speak to that. So there's a few layers of direction for the grid. In regard to any malfunction or or abnormality in operation of the equipment. So the power conversion system itself, so the inverters there that basically take take the energy from the batteries and set it up. Into the right wires. Those have protection settings, so if there's any abnormal conditions detected in the batteries. Or some issue happened to the batteries, those inverters have some fail safes in them. Blue Wave, Espauder air connection process with Eversource, we have a series of three poles that have protection equipment. And Eversource will also install their own redundant set of poles that have protection equipment. So those each have a load break disconnect that can fully separate the system from the grid. And base so basically if there's, we we can shut down the system and shut it off from the grid. And also Eversource can and will do the same if there's any any condition detected that could could cause some kind of, you know. Damage or issue with the grid, so I know I wouldn't expect the system would shut down. It would it would no longer send power under the grid and wouldn't cause the the grid and Amherst to to have any issues.
All right, does that satisfy your your concerns, Ms. Marshall? All right, good. I had a couple of other. Couple of other conditions. One is deals with the, I have a condition that the lights are dark sky compliant. I don't I don't see that in the management plan or I didn't I don't have didn't notice it anyplace, so a condition that lights are dark sky compliant. And in accordance with our rules and regulations. I think it seems to me that we should, we need to make a decision about whether you put up a monument sign. Or whether you just put signs up on the wall and whether there's four signs on on the property on every single wall. So I think with a condition that said there's four, either amend your signage plan or a condition that there's four signs on the on the sound wall. And then we have to decide whether there's a should be a monument sign or not. And I said they were amenable to having a monument sign. I think it's a good idea to just have it out there as opposed to just identification on the the wall. Which could get overgrown with trees and shrubs over time. Lastly, cut sheets on wall. I've always signs. And lastly is the is sort of a ground, taking care of the ground and the landscaping in the front. And I think that can be, I think you could amend your management plan where you talk about how you're going to repair the ground. And you give special attention to repairing and and providing reseeding with native plants, bushes. And shrubs in the area in the front of the building. And I think if you amend your your management plan to do that. I think you don't need to put a condition in, but I think if you do that, then you have to abide by the management plan. And you it gives you more flexibility and you can you can still do it at the same time. Or be required to do it. Yes, Ms. Marshall.
I don't have a strong feeling about a monument sign, but if if that is a condition, does the applicant need to return to us with? A plan? I mean, we have reviewed such, you know, monument sign plans in the past, or do we just say? Like the building commissioners?
Well, I would I would leave it up to the building commissioner. I know they've got enough work to do, but I I think we're going to have too much work to do coming up to review a monument sign. I think. I don't think we need to do that.
We're not obliged. We don't have to review it if.
I don't think what Rob has got his hand up, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to opine at all on anything until I hear from Mr. Mora.
No, that's fine. I was just going to mention now, so it doesn't get lost when you get further along. You will need to grant a waiver under section eight point five for the the maximum number of signs. That are permitted in the residential district pertaining to the use, which is two. So I just want just to make you aware of that. It wasn't an issue when there was just one sign being proposed, but with four or five signs. If you could just grant, you know, acknowledge that waiver being granted and, you know, I'm happy to deal with the rest of it when when it comes up for construction.
All right. After we vote on the conditions, we'll move right to the waiver of eight point two.
Yeah, eight point five. It's actually it's section eight point one zero one is the section that has the limit of the the number of signs. And an eight point five is the section that authorizes the waiver. Any of the provision.
All right.
Could you repeat the sections, please? You said eight point five and what was the other one?
Eight point one zero one.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Parks.
Does that signage include like danger high voltage or is it just the name of the of the business?
I thought it was just the name of the business and the danger high voltage was on the wall was on the sound walls.
Okay, because I I agree with Sarah suggesting that there's, you know, danger high voltage on all of the surface or at least on the front and the back. But when you say monument sign, I just want to make sure I understand that because I guess when I think of monument sign, I think of something made of stone. But this is like just something on two posts, right?
Right.
All right, and I would.
Freestanding is what I think of it as something freestanding and yeah.
That's what I thought you meant. I would say that for me, I I'll just throw out that I think it will make it look more like a friendly business. Than a penitentiary again with a freestanding sign. It will be a little friendlier. Blue Wave is a nice name. So, you know, I I would, I would recommend that as well.
Great. Any other comments from board members and then we'll go to Mr. Watchella. Okay, Mr. Watchella.
Could I recommend to the board, you just, you did suggest proposing a condition for the signs. Can we change the word monument sign to freestanding sign so it's more broad? Just so the applicant doesn't have to get a sign with masonry work involved.
Yeah, whatever, whatever is the correct term of art there is.
Perfect.
Is what we want. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that, yeah, we do not want, I don't want them putting up a gray stone. All right. Okay, so I'm not heard any objection to any of the outlined conditions. So I would entertain a motion that we approve the conditions as laid out in the proposed. Application report with the modifications that we have discussed and the additional conditions that we have discussed. All right, and I heard us, I think I heard two, so there's a second. Ms. Marshall, it's moved by Ms. Parks. Oh, Mr. Meadows seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, this is a roll call vote. Chair votes aye. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
All right, the conditions are approved. Next, we'd go to our findings and waivers. Thank you for catching that, Mr. Mora. First thing I'd want to do is is note that we that we should waive eight point. The limits in eight point one zero one and that authority to do that waiver is found in section eight point five. So that would be an amendment to the plan and that we approve the waiver. Since we're doing that, which is added here and it wasn't currently in the plan or in the project. Would think it'd be a good idea to vote on that. So this deals with the, this deals with the signs. Have a motion to approve the waiver.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, the vote occurs on the motion to approve the waiver eight point one zero one and eight point five. Chair votes aye. Ms. Parks?
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield?
Aye.
Mr. Meadows?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Great. Now we'll make our findings. There are several findings. The first is it's in the conservation district. That roadways that on the man to have the least possible impact on adjacent land or agricultural lands. With all the drainage work they did, I think they satisfied that. Three point two eight five seven, every reason what effort should be made to maintain views of open agricultural lands from nearby public ways. I would just remove that first bullet. There is no existing agricultural activity on five fifteen or on the abiding properties. There looks to be, you know, agricultural. Activity on abiding properties, but I think that a reason, every reasonable effort has been made to maintain the views of open agricultural lands. So I think you take away that first bullet.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, where are you?
Yep, so I'm under section, I'm under. What's on page nineteen of the project draft project application report? We're looking at the findings we have to make.
For me, they start on page. Twenty. Two, the ten point three eight specific.
Yeah, I'm back earlier. That's ten point three eight we'll go through as well. These are the other, these are other sections. Some of them are not applicable and some we just have to find that we're not violating the the intent. Zoning by law. So the second one is three point two eight five seven. I don't think it applies in this case. I mean, I I do think it applies, but I think they've done, it made a reasonable effort to not. Obscure open the view of open agricultural land. Section three point three, use and classification standards. This is, this is allowed in. The districts that it sits in. Section six is dimensional requirements. The first one is fences. The applicant is installing a sixteen-foot fence. Sound barrier, his sound barrier will be within all the setbacks. The second part, it deals with landscaping will be required subject to conditions. And the last is that the height of the barrier is is within limits. The limit is thirty-five feet. This is high is the highest fence permitted. This is a sixteen-foot sound barrier. So it's less than the maximum limit, so it meets those dimensional regulations. Parking requirements. There's sufficient parking for the use of the of the. Of the property. But more importantly, it's talking about the dense graded crushed zone and the proposed driver will slope of the driveway, all which meet the requirements. Seven point one three one zero three, again setbacks. Satisfies that. No building structures are in the proposed access driveways. And there's a minimum width entrance and exit of eighteen feet and this is a twenty-foot driveway. Um, oh, excuse me, minimum of ten feet and we have an eighteen foot wide for two way use. The minimum road was, yeah, but we have um, satisfy that. We've got no portion of the driveway. The edge of the street pavement shall be closer than seventy five feet from the intersection. So the proposed driveway exceeds the exceeds the requirement, which is good. And, uh, um, I guess we didn't talk about whether the emergency vehicles can safely turn around. I guess that's why the hammerhead has been put there. So we would hear from the fire department if that didn't work. Yep. Okay. Seven point seven access requirements and driveways. This is where we talk about the twenty foot driveway, twenty foot wide driveway. The requirement is, it exceeds the requirement of twelve feet. And it, and it also, um, does not exceed the slope requirements. So I think we're they've met the, the conditions, the requirements of that section. Section seven point nine deals with parking regulations. We don't, we should, I think we have to waive, we have to waive them. They just we have to waive the parking requirements, Rob Mora, where we just, there aren't any for this, are there? Seven point nine zero.
No, I believe you just went through confirming compliance with all the designs.
Everything for everything.
There's nothing to waive.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Now we're at ten point three eight. So, um, ten point three eight zero and ten point three eight one. This is basically that it's located in a suitable location. Um, I believe that it is in a suitable location. It's an, it's a, it's, but it's allowed by special permit in the two zoning districts in which the property is sixth. Um, and I think it fits within the surrounding areas. Ten point three eight, two, three, eight, three, three, eight, five, and three, eight, seven. This generally, these sections generally deal with nuisance and, um, disturbance from the prop, from the use of the property on the neighboring sites. Uh, and I think the, there's, they've demonstrated that there's very little, um, nuisance flood, noise, odor, dust, vibrations. And they've imposed that and they've constructed a sixteen foot high wall to minimum, to minimize the, um, nuisance to the neighbors. So I think they've met the requirements of those four sections. Ten point three eight, four adequate and appropriate facilities provided for proper operation, proposed use. Um, they have the needed equipment to, to safely handle the site, respond to emergency situations and handle onsite repairs and management. It's in their O N M plan. Ten point three eight, six. Uh, we already dealt with this parking. And we sign, there will be signs erected. So we have to change this, Rob. Uh, we have to change this. All right. So we'll change this to accommodate the four signs and the land and the freestanding sign. Ten point three eight, seven proposal provides convenient and safe vehicular traffic and produce within the, um, within the site. Um, that I think they have, um, done that. And I just, but I, and I don't think there's going to be any. I'm sure you're not going to have vehicles inside, which, once this is constructed, you're going, you're not, vehicles are not going to be going inside the, the, the sound barrier. You're going to do everything by a crane.
Just within the portion of access road that's on the northern boundary.
Yeah. Okay. So I think you've met the requirements of ten point three eight, seven. Ten point three eight, eight proposal ensures adequate space for off-street loading and parking. Uh, yeah, the hammerhead drive seems to do that. And there's also just, you're not going to be you're not delivering materials there very often. Uh, ten point three eight, nine, the proposal provides adequate methods of disposal and or recyclables. After construction, I don't think there's going to be very much in the way of, um, trash there, but should there be? Um, there, your management plan has you taking it away from the site. Uh, ten point three nine zero, the proposal ensures fire protection, flood hazards. Um, we've talked about this, um, and you're going to be getting your, your number one, you have, you seem to have, um, complied with all the UL and other kinds of industry standards for safety. You're having an excellent, um, you'll have a, um, approval from the fire department, the police departments and the building commissioners for the, um, material there and, and it's not located in a floodplain. I guess this is all floodplain. I'm sorry. I thought this was more than that. So you're not in the floodplain. You don't have to deal with three point nine zero. Three point nine one. Not applicable. Three point nine two. Adequate landscaping. Um, you, I think you meet all this. It's up around the, the sound barrier wall. We talked about the, uh, reseating of, of natural plants and, and, um, pollinators. And you have specified which trees, uh, in your site, in your additional detail. Ten point three nine, three. Protection of adjacent properties by preventing intrusion of lighting. You're going to have, you're going to comply with the review of, with the rules of the the Z B A regarding, um, downcast lighting. Uh, ten point three nine, four. Flat piece of property, no floodplanes. I don't think this is aside from the, um, order of conditions from the COMCOM, I don't think you're going to be um, endangering the wetlands or you're not on steep slopes. Ten point three nine, five does not create disharmony with respect to terrain used scale and architecture. Um, yeah. So you, you've limited the sound, the, you've gone to great lengths to, you, you've agreed to go to, to, um, paint so that it doesn't alter, it doesn't create disharmony, paint something to, so it matches the natural colors. Um, that it won't create disharmony in the district. Um, and you're also, you're dealing with the sound, um, at a low level through the construction of the sound barrier. And you're going to have an applicant, uh, you're going to have the, um, sound company come out once after construction is completed to check that. Ten point three nine, six proposals provide screening for storage areas. Um, I think this is fine. The sound barrier will protect everything. Ten point three nine, seven adequate recreational. This is not applicable. Ten point three nine, eight is in harmony, general purpose and ten of the bylaw. The proposal abides by the auspices of the zoning bylaw despite the fact that that's regulation still is in progress. It also buys by Massachusetts renewable energy goals and ambitions. So it's, I, I don't think it's by, proposed by the auspices, but the, um, the aspirations of, of the, you know, of the, um, bylaw or something to that effect, Rob. But, um, I think, I, I find, and I think the board agrees that we've met the, uh, requirements under ten point three eight and the other sections of zoning bylaw. And we can find that you've complied with them. With that, um, is there any other discussion from board members before we have a motion to approve the project application with conditions? Oh, well, let's, let's vote on the, on the findings before we do that. Um, is there a motion to, to make the findings as just discussed by me in block for um, section ten point three eight, second, the rest of the sections?
So moved.
I hear, I hear a move. I, I hear one and I hear two. We've got, uh, a motion and a second. Um, any discussion? All in favors? Um, it's a roll call vote. I vote aye. Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
Mr. Meadows.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
All right. We've made the find, required findings under the zoning bylaw. The next motion is to, is a motion to approve the application, um, before us with conditions. Ms. Marshall.
Just when do we close the public hearing? I'm sorry. It's, I just don't know.
We'll do that as part of, we'll, no, we'll do this as part of, of this motion where we close the public, we'll, we will, um, vote, we'll approve the special, the motion will be to approve the special application report with, uh, special permit with conditions and that we propose a public hearing and public meeting on, on this application. That's the motion. Is there such a motion? Oh, I hope so. We got one.
I'll move that.
All right. And I think I heard Mr. Meadows for two.
Yeah.
Uh, all right. Is there any discussion? So the vote occurs on the motion to approve the special permit application with conditions and to close the, the public hearing and public meeting on this application. Roll call vote. The chair votes aye. Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Maxfield.
Aye.
Mr. Meadow.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
Great. Vote is five to zero unanimous vote. Um, congratulations. You've got your special permit. Um, you, you've got some work yet to do to keep the, to make the changes to your management plans and other things which we discussed. Uh, the staff has got a note of those things. Um, and you've also got, um, some work to do with the, um, the emergency response plan coming up, but congratulations. And if you have, um, you, you, you'll work with, with Rob and company and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for, I really appreciate all the questions. Uh, it was great working with you. Um, I'll follow up with Rob, uh, the planning department on, on A B and follow up Adams. And then, um, certainly I'll look to keep, keep the board in touch and in communication as we're, we're moving forward, but I really do appreciate your, uh, your questions and, uh, board and the project board.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Next order of business is, um, general public comment on matters not before the board tonight. We have four attendees and three attendees. And I don't see any hands up. All right. No public comment on matters not before the board tonight. Other business not anticipated within the last forty eight hours. And what I would add is the, I don't think there's, it's any business from board members. And new business is just, I would add that we need to schedule out the meetings. Now, what do we have coming up, Rob? Oops, I can't hear you.
There. Sorry. I forgot I was on mute. Um, so the next meeting we have, I believe is June eighth. We have two permits are upcoming for special permit. Uh, one is a extension and the other is a modification to the existing permit. Um, I don't know if you want me to go into details about those permits, but, uh, essentially, uh, one, actually, I don't really have that on top of my head right now as chairman, but.
It's all right. Yep. So we've got two things on the, on June eighth.
Yep. The June twenty second.
Yep.
Sorry, June twenty second is, um, so far there's one hearing scheduled and that's for a, um, modification as well. So they're pretty, pretty short hearings from what the foreseeable future seems like. Um, so that's what we have scheduled right now. Um, we don't have anything for July or August put in place yet.
So the June twenty second, oh, I will be in town. Okay. All right. Yep. Okay. Good enough. All right. Ms. Parks.
I just wanted to let everyone know that my commission ends on June thirtieth. So my last meeting will be, uh, June twenty second. I think, uh, Dylan as well. So it's really been wonderful serving with everybody. It's really, I've really enjoyed being on the Z B I. I think it's a great committee and I'm going to miss it. But I have a lot of stuff happening in my life now.
Well, we've really enjoyed working with you and we'll say formal goodbyes when, on your last, or your formal thank yous on your last meeting. But it's been a real pleasure to work with you, Tammy.
Thanks. And just one aside, sorry, Craig.
You weren't supposed to desert me.
I'd like to join other committees.
It's not fair.
Really bad. All right.
Mr. Maxfield, did you have your hand up too? Nope.
Nope, nope. But I, I didn't know Tammy was going. Sad to see you, you leave too. It's, uh, end of an era here.
I know. I, I think we've both been on it. Well, were you, you were on it before the last three turn, the last three years, right?
Nope. Like, uh, this will be the end of my, my three year term. I think you were on slightly before me. You were on as an associate member first or?
Yeah, I, I think for two years. I don't know. Yeah.
Two years, I think.
Yeah. Years altogether.
Well, you know, for both of you guys, Rob didn't test, didn't, he couldn't come right to off the top of his head that what was in the, on, uh, the agenda for June twenty second, but there's a really long forty B application that comes up twenty second. So we're going to hook you in and then you'll be, you'll be with us for
Couple more months left, you know?
We're not saying goodbye yet.
What's, what's another, what's another year?
Yeah.
All right. Well, anything else? Well, again, thank you to the staff on this one. We appreciate it and we appreciate your time tonight. And I appreciate all of your efforts, uh, from all the members doing their work and we'll see you all next week.
Oh, I, I just want to actually add on to that, Mr. Chair. I, I do want to thank the board, everybody here, uh, for this project especially. I don't feel like I was able to give it quite as much attention as I really would have liked to for something like this. So I, I thank you guys. You really, you guys really stepped up and crushed this one. Cause I'm like, all right, good. I, I can feel less bad about it. We're here with, uh, with a good group of people. So I appreciate it.
We're just trying to, everybody takes their turn carrying their weight. And when you have something going on, we want to carry it and help you out. So we did that. You've done it up for us enough times. Thank you.
Ms. Chair, you said, or somebody said?
Yeah.
You'd see us next week.
Oh, next meeting, not next week, next meeting. Yep.
Just.
Although, yeah, that was a Freudian slip. I, I will miss you guys if I don't see you every week.
I doubt it.
Yeah. That's all. All right. If there's nothing else, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. You two guys, you, you, you get the chance. Ms. Parks moves, Mr. Maxfield seconds the motion to adjourn until, um, the next meeting on June eighth. Um, this is a non-debatable motion and it requires a roll call vote. Chair votes aye. Ms. Parks.
Aye.
Mr. Max, Maxfield.
Aye.
Mr. Meadows.
Aye.
Ms. Marshall.
Aye.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you all. We'll see you in two weeks.